All right, I think that clock's almost, you got seven? You got seven o'clock?
It's my makeup.
Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, I'd like to call the meeting to order, show all council members are in attendance, and would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Is that moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I want to take a second tonight, in various departments and responsibilities of the city, citizens contribute on a regular basis, and without their contributions, government could oftentimes not operate as efficiently as it does in city government, I want to qualify city government, but tonight, we'd like to recognize one of those volunteers, and quite frankly, an exceptional volunteer. Robert Bob Wiggy has been on the Police Advisory Board for thirty years plus. So I'm going to start by reading a recognition from David Young's office of congratulations for years of service to the Council of Bliss community and surrounding area. You are one of Iowa's exemplary men who remained in the community and made a difference. Your dedication to the citizens is noted by your willingness to work hard and to be a liaison for the people of Council of Bliss, knowing you are keeping them safe and secure. And so, the recognition from the House of Representatives, Mr. Young of Iowa. Speaker, I rise today to recognize and congratulate Robert Bob Wiggy of Council of Bliss, Iowa, who recently retired as a member of the Citizens Police Advisory Board of Council of Bliss. The Citizens Police Advisory Board acts as liaison to strengthen relationships between citizens of Council of Bliss and the local police department. Bob has served on the Advisory Board for over thirty years. When Bob retired in 1984 from the US Army, he knew he wanted to do something for his community. He became a member of the Citizens Police Advisory Board because it had a history of loyalty and structure to the US Army. He's served five different police chiefs while serving on the Advisory Board. Mr. Wiggy said he couldn't remember something that Lyndon Johnson had said, "Law enforcement cannot succeed without the sustained and informed interest of all citizens." When he read this statement, Bob knew this was something he could do for his community. Bob was raised in Norfolk and attended Norfolk High. There he met his future wife, Mary Ann, and they married in 1948. Bob joined the US Army later that year and spent the next thirty years serving our country. Bob has not asked for any special recognition, but has been motivated by his desire to serve his nation and his community. I recommend and congratulate Bob Wiggy for his service to our country and his commitment and dedication to Council of Bliss, Iowa. I am proud to represent him in the United States Congress, and I know that my colleagues in the US Health House of Representatives join me in congratulating Bob Wiggy for his service and wish him the very best. David Young, Honorable Member of Congress. And we have a certificate from the City of Council of Bliss, certificate of appreciation, is presented to Robert Bob Wiggy as an expression of our sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to the citizens of Council of Bliss, Iowa, by serving on the Citizen Police Advisory Board from 1986 until May 1st of 2016, presented this 25th day of July 2016. On behalf of the City Council, the citizens of Council of Bliss, and myself, I want to thank you for your exemplary service to our community. Thank you so much. (applause) Certainly welcome to say something.
I guess I've passed my age of public speaking, but I'll try. I do thank you, Mayor Walsh, members of the council, and the board members from the Citizens' Advisory Committee, there's two of them here, and my wife, Mary Ann, who I would like to stand up. Today happens to be our sixty-eighth wedding anniversary.
Wow.
I guess I can only say, you know, this is very humbling, and I didn't expect any of it, but I have appreciated being on the board and working with the police department. And right now, you have a great police chief, who I forgot to introduce earlier, but I had the privilege, I guess if you would call it that, of going through or being on the board and serving through five different police chiefs. And I can assure you that every one of them had the officer's interests at hand. I was always impressed how they kept, and I'm sure came to the council, but when they needed something for new equipment or ongoing training, that was always their primary goal. Plus, you know, they took care of the officers, and you can tell it, our police department, I think, is one of the best in the country. We just should be so proud of them. And now, in this day and age, more than ever, all of us, I think, should show day-to-day respect to the officers. I would like to, I guess, tell everyone, when you pass an officer, even on the street and in the police car, give them a little friendly wave. That means an awful lot, so, again, I guess that's all I could say, but I thank you all for coming from the board. And Chief Armady, he's, the department is in good hands, and I know he'll do a great job, so, thank you once again, I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the public hearings. This time and place for public hearings advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-192, to release a perpetual and permanent easement located across the vacated East West Alley abutting lots 79 through 83 and 102 through 106 Belmont Edition, MIS-16-001. Is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? And if you could please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Patrick Mettinger, I'm the Controller at Future Foam. I live at 1502 Jones Street in Omaha. What we're doing here on the lots 102 through 106 is our current corporate office, the office in the parking area. We own the lots to the north, the five lots to the north, 79 through 83, and we intend to sort of double the size of our corporate office with a IT data center. We've recently put all that land under one ownership now, and have moved all utilities, all the poles are out, everything's out. We need to cross that land for addition, and that's the reason we request the vacation of the easements permanently.
Perfect. Anyone from the council have any questions?
Just thank you, and I'm sure all of us thank you for your continued investment in our community, it's much appreciated.
And earlier today, I think you guys gave some tax abatement because of that addition to the lot. It's nice to see you as well.
It's coming up after this.
It's coming up, but I think you anticipate it well.
Okay, I thought it was early. Thanks very much.
But, thank you. All right, anybody else? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This time and place for public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-193, authorizing disposal of city property legally described as lots nine and 10, Block 16, Rights Edition, OTB-16-0, I'm sorry, -010. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This time and place for public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-194, approving the plan specification form of contract and cost estimate for the Walnut Grove Elementary, open parentheses 2920 Avenue J, close parentheses demolition and restoration project, is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? What is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I just want to commend, I think it's a fabulous project that helps increase the fantastic, the neighborhood, and provides true learning opportunities for our local college kids to learn trades, which are so important that people do. It's a fantastic living, and I think it's an all-in-all, a win-win for our community to be involved in such endeavors.
Absolutely.
So, also appreciate the effort to increase the volume of available housing in that area that's affordable to the community.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance on first reading, ordinance 6277, amending Title I Administration and Personnel by amending Chapter 1.62.030, classification and appointment, to replace the Bluffs Arts Council with the Potawatomi Arts Culture and Entertainment Pace Council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-166 postponed from June 27, 2016, approving the capital improvement program, the CIP, for fiscal years 2016 to 2017 through 2020 to 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
For folks that have taken a look at this in the past, this is rather detailed plan, and I asked for and received from Mr. Jordette a even more detailed breakout of the various projects addressed in this capital improvement plan. And I've expressed concerns before about level of funding for some programs, for some projects, and the fact that not all projects are funded to the extent that we would like to see them funded. This is also very, very late coming in this fiscal year, but my compliments to Mr. Jordette and to the mayor for stepping out to align this process to match up with the budget approval process that normally takes place in the January timeframe. That's a very good step forward, and we have a commitment to begin work on that process for next year's capital improvement program in just a couple of weeks' time. So that's a very good sign that we're going to be able to marry this up better with the budgeting process and make sure that our resources match the needs for various projects. So I'm willing to support this with those reforms in mind.
I agree with that, and the only thing I would add is, I look forward to, in the year ahead, myself included, to being more a part of the ongoing comprehensive putting together of this plan. I think it could, I believe the consensus is, is that throughout the year, then we'll be able to have greater contemporaneous, ongoing input into the, it's a five-year rolling plan for our capital projects, basically anything that's concrete or anything of hard substance like that. It's a rolling plan, it doesn't authorize any specific project, but it does give a blueprint, a roadmap, if you will, for where our community is planning, we think we're going to go. And I think it's important that all of us in both branches of government, the mayor and the council, have great input into that plan, and I look forward to it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-176 postponed from July 11, 2016, vacating and disposing of that portion of North 13th Street lying north of the North Line of Avenue K.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to make sure which one we're on, is this on the vacation of the, the one with the railroad?
Yes.
Okay. Just, was that a motion to approve the vacation or deny per staff recommendation?
To approve the vacation.
To approve the vacation, okay.
Because the railroad thing was resolved, right? I think.
No, we got a letter this week from the railroad.
They seem to have changed their position, unless I misunderstand them.
Tyler, are you welcome to address the council if you want?
Yeah, I thought he then said that.
No, the power company one was resolved, and now the railroad.
Tyler Bruno, 139 Brentwood Heights, Council of Iowa. Initially, the only issue with vacating this was the overhead power lines. Planning Board asked me to get something from the power company saying it was okay. I got it. You guys got it two weeks ago. Railroad sent something on June 13th, said they were opposed to it being vacated, but if the vacation is approved, they're willing to purchase their side. They got the notice that this was happening the same time I did. I've been fighting this for months. She called me today. There's not an issue. Nobody's been there to even look at it. She told me on the phone today, well, we can't have somebody there for like three days, you know, I don't know what to tell you.
I think, if I read it correctly, the railroad's, Mid-America Energy wants to retain the option to get to the overhead lines. The railroad said they'll take their half, they won't let Mid-America Energy on their property, which is kind of their power play, but you would allow them on your property, and the width of your half would be thirty-five feet?
Thirty-three, thirty-three feet. Even if I put a fence up and I take the thirty-three feet, it leaves a full width road to drive, not on my property, to drive along the train tracks, and even if I fenced my thirty-three feet, the power company could still access their overhead lines. I personally own a truck that could access those lines, so, I mean, it's not an issue. It's not an issue at all, so.
You mentioned if you build a fence, so you haven't.
I mean, I'm sure you all are aware of that area. Yeah, chances are I'm going to fence it. I have employees, so it's going to be virtually parking for employees. We won't be there all day, every day, you know, so, I'm trying to clean that area up best I can, and until we see significant changes, yep, chances are I'm going to fence in my lot. City told me I'm going to have to pave it, so these are all things that I'm fully aware of, and I know that I'm going to have to do, and so.
So I'm not clear, and I'm not voting, but you said you're going to put a fence up and they could drive their truck on the railroad tracks to get to the...
Do you see that green line?
Yeah.
That would be my new property line.
Okay.
Now, everything to the east.
I'm not sure, looking at Tyler, were the, are the lines down that alley that run east-west?
Yes. Actually, do you see the red lines?
Yeah.
Those are the power lines, those are the overhead lines. Do you see where it crosses just the corner of the green box?
Okay, all the red lines are power lines?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So that was the issue with the power company, which we resolved, and nobody from the railroad has been able to go down there and actually look at it. And, you know, when I spoke to the attorney today on the phone, I told her, I said, if somebody can meet me there in three days, great. If my fence can't go on the thirty-three foot mark, then I'll put it on the thirty-foot mark, or the twenty-eight foot mark, you know, but it still leaves them, it's fifty-plus feet of open, you know.
You still would let them, they'll be able to access even with your fence?
Yes.
If they need to.
I think you're being, I think you're being very reasonable. I realize any vacation has varying degrees of inconvenience for those involved, but, again, weighing our job to weigh the interests of you as a local business, and how that will help that area, and what I think is a relatively de minimis inconvenience to the railroad, I, you've convinced me.
This really does fall in with our program of trying to get city properties off of our...
The weeds are six foot tall right now.
Correct. You know how I feel about that, so.
Yes, yes, you do, and I agree.
And railroad doesn't mow them.
No.
You know, if they're that tall, they must not be driving on it right now.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Sure, the railroad's just concerned that if there's rail traffic there, that somebody doesn't bump up against a train.
Sure, sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the motion is to approve the vacation, motion and second. Any further discussion by the council?
It's that. Also, thank you for the additional information on this. In this day and age, fencing is absolutely indispensable to small business to help secure their property and their assets, and so I respect your willingness to invest and to do the necessary construction in order to protect that investment, so I think it's perfectly reasonable.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-195, vacating and disposing of that portion of North 14th Street lying north of the North Line of Avenue M, and amending Resolution Number 16-84, adopted and approved on April 11, 2016, to correct the legal description indicated for this property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-196, adopting the planned commercial development plan for property legally described as Lot 2, plus Vision 2 subdivision replant 1.
Motion to approve. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-197, authorizing the mayor to execute an Iowa Department of Transportation Federal Aid Agreement Number 2016-E-201, for the Eastern Hills Drive and Cedar Lane Construction Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Just that, this project's been in the works for years and years, as long as I, well, as long as I've been on the council, much longer, so it's nice to see it start moving forward, and this should open up some areas for development that we really need, so.
Completing the federal EIS took eleven years.
Mm-hmm. Not so fast.
Pretty incredible.
It'd take a long time.
It is.
Yeah.
They drilled over two thousand holes looking for Indian burial grounds.
That they didn't find any in that area is remarkable, actually.
That's why they kept looking.
Yeah.
Hope the road doesn't collapse later on.
Swiss cheese.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-198, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Bluffs Paving and Utility Company Incorporated for the ICAP project, East Broadway realignment at Canesville Boulevard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Just that, this afternoon, I expressed that it's, I wasn't sure exactly what the point of this was, but I was assured by my colleagues that this was going to happen in the future, federal mandate, so it's been like that for a long time. I thought it was no big deal to leave it that way, but apparently, we're going to be forced to, so no sense in waiting.
Agreed, though also on the upside, I'd point out that making it possible to have legal right turns on red, right, and we're talking East Broadway, where it merges into Canesville in front of the gas station there, and there's that island with the Globe statue or monument in the middle of it, it'll make that traffic pattern align more with the changes we've made the last several years to East Broadway, namely, it goes to one lane before the block is out, before you reach Frank, so having two turn lanes there really didn't make sense, and you'd have to stop, and I think anybody who's ever had to stop at that light, particularly late in the evening or at night, you wait forever. And making that easier to use, I think in the end is a good thing.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-199, authorizing the mayor to negotiate an agreement with Hofer Waissaki Architecture for Design and Related Services during the design development bidding, construction and commission phases of a new police headquarters building.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-200, authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the City of Council of Bliss and Future Foam Incorporated for benefits under the targeted jobs withholding tax credit program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? We did get notification from the Iowa Department of Economic Development that the state request for benefits was approved, and so this will help offset that.
Great news.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-201, confirming the city's commitment to extend its funding agreement with Advance Southwest Iowa Corporation for an additional forty-two months, subject to a similar commitment from Potawatomi County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I think it's a fantastic partnership with several different layers of community partners and government. I do want to single up a praise of the leadership of my colleague, Councilmember White, on leading that board, and all the hard work and time I know she puts into that effort. I think it's only right that we show our commitment by being a continued funding partner of this important organization as it branches out and achieves ever more growth. I'm very supportive of it, and particularly thank the board members, including my colleague, for their service.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-202, approving the information resolution regarding a complaint of an open meetings law violation made to the Iowa Public Information Board and authorizing the city council members to execute said resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-203, authorizing the mayor to execute an order accepting the acknowledgment settlement agreement from Courthouse Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolution 16-204, authorizing the mayor to execute the order accepting the acknowledgment settlement agreement from BNR Stores Incorporated, EBA Super Saber Number 12.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Citizens' request to be heard?
Nope.
This is only for AA though, right?
Hold on. Oh, this is on a particular matter, not in general. I'm sorry, Bruce, maybe we're assuming.
Well, it doesn't have a front here on it.
Oh, it does, not on that, oh, our apologies.
I'd make a motion to deny the request to waive the fees.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, I'm sorry, could, could I get clarification on the motion? I should have asked more quickly. I, I'm not sure I understood.
Oh, I, I made a motion to deny the request to.
Oh, for the waiver, okay.
Do we also want to make a amendment to, or?
I, I don't, I don't.
I don't, not tonight. I just wanted to deny this request and then we can address.
Yes.
I'd asked him, he said, this is fine.
Okay, okay.
This is just not taking action, if I understand your motion correctly.
They made a request for, um, a waiver and I'm making a motion to deny the request.
Did you want to speak?
Yes, may I?
Of course.
You need to give your name and address.
My name is Teresa Jacoby, thirty-eight Dillon, Colonial Plaza, Council of Siowa. I'm a resident of Colonial Plaza and I have a couple of questions that, um, the tenants and I would like to have answered at some point down the road. And one is, does, um, Judith Garnos Graham, Garnoth Hutek, actually have conservatorship of that property? Secondly, the rent to which we have been paying over the last two or three months. Our question is, if there's any way we can find out if that money has gone to the bank, First National Bank of South Dakota, or to another account? And, um, so those are the two questions I have. A couple of comments that I have is that, uh, the income on that, we estimate is, um, over thirty thousand dollars a month. And, uh, that's, there are forty apartments there, so just give or take with, with garages and, uh, the places downstairs to store extra material and that sort of a thing. And a comment that, um, there are forty families who are traumatized by this situation. And the majority of those people are, well, everybody's over fifty-five years old. There are people ninety-three years old and down from that. But the, it isn't just that the, the people who live there are traumatized, but their families are traumatized too. Because some people have been, um, I don't want to use a name, but, uh, one family has already been evicted. Although since Judith has said that she was going to evict them, they chose to send a letter to her that they were giving their thirty days' notice. And so, I'm really pleased with the Social Services Department of Council Bluffs, mainly the peer connection, the Southwest Eight people have come and visited with people who had the courage to talk to them and have fixed it so they have access to legal aid for, uh, what's going on down there. Unfortunately, these people are old and scared because they know somebody got evicted and they're afraid to go to legal aid or really to make any kind of a comment about it because they're afraid that they'll be next. The condition of the property, I'd like to refer you to Steve Carmichael and in particular, um, Maureen Ellers because she cleared her calendar as soon as she found out about it with, with, um, Mr. Carmichael's permission and went down. And the conditions in that place are not safe and they're hazardous. And that's all I'm going to say because Maureen could tell you more about that. This is going to be an ongoing thing and you guys just are concerned about the forty thousand dollars that they haven't paid in their, you know, to the city for their share. And, uh, but our concern is, well, my concern is, I hate to use the word busybody, but you know I am, but I'm calling it a, um, what was it that I said?
Elder abuse.
No, yeah, and, and the issue is elder abuse. But, um, community activists, that's what I'd prefer you call me, is, is a busybody, okay? And, uh, but it is, it is clearly elder abuse. And, uh, I'd like to thank the city council for putting this on the agenda and tabling it to this time so we had some more information. And I'm sure that there are ninety families, uh, the people that live there and their families are going to be much relieved as soon as this issue is taken care of by whomever. Thank you.
And just to clarify, thank you for, for sharing all that with us. All that we had on here was just about waiving the rental fees? So, we don't know, I mean, I think you spoke to a couple, but we don't know about all the rest of this as far as council. But I'm sure that we'll have.
The rental inspection department is in the process of looking at it. They've been out there, they've talked to the tenants. As long as, these are assumptions on my part, as long as they continue to make their bank payments, then I assume it's not in receivership. If it is, they would have sent you a notice that you would send your payment to somebody else. If you're month-to-month, they can move you out in thirty days. If you have a, a lease agreement, the bank wouldn't, and any subsequent owners wouldn't, would need to honor those lease terms and conditions.
We do not, we do not have a lease. Uh, a few years ago, we did up until, well, I guess it was before, um, Graham Garnos purchased it in two thousand and twelve. Then the leases that were up to then, um, were, there were, there were a lease and some of us still have that lease. But since two thousand and twelve, it has been a month-to-month. So, I guess it is possible that, um, and has been, and it has been done, that people have been threatened and traumatized by, if you do anything to make any moves about this, you'll be evicted. And they already know somebody has been evicted. And those persons who were evicted decided to cut it and they sent a, uh, they sent, um, a letter of, uh, we're going to quit, whatever, we're going to quit, um, you know, we're going to move out by August first or something like that.
I want to thank you if I can, Teresa, because you did, you did speak to two of us. You generously made time to speak with Councilmember White and I after the study session so we could hear. And, and of course, we, we follow the rules, so it was the two of us speaking with you. And, and I don't want to relate all of the details publicly. It's not, because I think, I don't want to prejudice any investigations or anything of that nature. And in this chair, we have to be very mindful of what we do. But the, from, from hearing from what you've said and hopefully we're able to, I believe we were able to give you some advice that might be helpful. And, and I really want to commend you because you, you call it busy buzzy, busybody. But as a community activist, I've been accused of that and many others. And it's, it's a good thing you stand up. And, and you know, unlike you and, when others of us, including me, speak up, it's, it's far less of, of a, of a risk. You're really standing up and, and speaking for a lot of people who are afraid to come forward. You know, whether other folks might agree with them or not, I tend to agree and think there's probably something to it, but that's my personal view. Uh, but whether there is or not, you've, you've, you've stood up here and spoke your piece in public on behalf of a lot of people. And you've done that on various city commissions and, and things since I've known you and I met, and even before I, I've known you. And I want to thank you for all that you do in bringing this to light. And I do think it ties to this because if, if, it's very important that our pla, that places that rent get inspected for minimal health and safety. And it's, it's no surprise that the places that don't even register at all tend to be the ones that have the worst health and safety risks. You know, bad wiring I've, I've seen. I went and looked when we had the, the bill last year to, to, to beef up the inspections where there were, you could see daylight through exterior walls. You know, we're not talking, the carpet could be two years newer than it is, we're talking severe. And, and especially when it's among our, respectfully, I say, to the more vulnerable, particularly to our elderly who might not have other people to speak for them and they might not have many life choices based on their circumstances. And for you to come here and speak for them takes a lot more bravery than any of us up here. And so, I, I thank you.
Okay, and I, you notice there isn't anybody here with me, but they're all watching on channel seventeen.
Yes, they're with you, they're with you in spirit and you carried their voice and so, kudos to you.
That's good because, you know, they're still intimidated and we don't have this going to turn up.
Sure. And I, I hope you'll, you'll take our, our recommendations and, and, and look into those avenues so that this can be fully investigated and the truth, whatever it may be, prevails.
Bruce?
Do we need to continue to?
Bruce Kelly, eight sixty-four.
Oh, did we? I'm sorry, we have not voted. Hold it.
Oh, sorry.
Stay right there, stay right there.
I'll say we haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted, good call.
On the count, I thought we'd voted and then Teresa.
Oh, and then I asked a clarification and I hadn't voted. Would you mind if we vote again? I'm sorry.
So, are we clear on the motion?
Bruce can, yeah.
I think so.
Any additional comments from the council?
As long as that's okay with Dick, then I'm fine.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Bruce Kelly, eight sixty-four, McKenzie Avenue. I am proud of you to come forward. This is just not happening here, it's happening nationwide. Company's doing this. Okay, bike trail, you know that. And the other deal, uh, was it XL or whatever it is, building, they're building down there on Twenty-Fourth?
XTL.
XTL, they haven't done anything in a while. I don't know if you noticed, it has been a while since I've been now, about ten, twelve days, the weeds.
We have, um, notified them of the weed notice. They said they would get somebody there to do it. As of Friday, they had not. Um, my understanding was if nobody had done it by today, the city was going to do it and charge back to them substantial acreage. And so, the cost of the city will be in excess of five thousand dollars to clean that up. And so, we were hoping they were going to get to it, but one way or the other, I think it got done today. I'll double check that tomorrow.
Okay, I don't know if they're just going to cut and run or not. I don't know what's going on down there.
I honestly don't have a good answer for you.
Okay. And the other deal, I'm going to bring up something and the Parks Department just kind of go, what? Up there at Fairmont Park, lookout. Took my grandson up there to look out. You can't see anything anymore.
Volunteer trees everywhere.
And all the volunteer trees and stuff. And they said, we're not going down the bank. Well, I said they have before.
Yeah.
So, I just thought I'd bring that up. Like, you can't see nothing anymore. It's no fun up there if you were young.
I, I'll plead the fifth, but, uh, you, that book, you, you lent me, if I may say so, a book recently of one of the Council Plus histories. And I remember a few photos in there, especially in early days when this was all pretty much still prairie and grassland. There were hardly any trees on those hills.
They've cut them down before.
Yeah, but you're right, in the twentieth century, we used to cut them down. And you can't, you can't see the Dodge House, you can't, we used to, that's true. And I wish we would again, it's very expensive and dangerous. I grant you, but I wish we would.
But it's, it's been done before.
Plead the fifth, Matt.
They've done that and I, I noticed somebody missed me last week. And the reason why sometimes family is more important than, than anything else, some of you know why.
It's always more important.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Seen no one, we're adjourned. Thank you. See you in two weeks.